Okay, we're running late. We're ready to start the public hearing of RGS site plan approval for 441 Glen Road. We'll try to do this one in a half an hour if possible. We're looking at a number of design changes in this, I think. And somewhere in Betsy's notes is a reference to a letter that we received.
There were actually two letters.
Two letters?
One letter, they were both from Lucy and Philip Saunders. One is dated June 17th, 2014, that responds to the former set of plans.
Didn't we read that one in the record at the last meeting?
I thought we did, but I can attach it to the minutes if somebody wants me to read it. I'm more than willing to read it. And then subsequently, we, the board got a letter dated July 14th, which I will read. It's a little bit shorter. So regarding 441 Glen Road, dear planning board members, this letter follows our letter of June 17th, 2014 attached regarding the subject property. Since the developer has submitted plan revisions dated July 7th, 2014, as best we can discern, these revisions change little from the first revised plan. Comments and requests in our June 17th letter still stand. In the July 17th revision, the house has been moved a bit more to the northeast, still approximately 19 feet from the southerly setback line, but 65 feet from the northerly setback line. If the house were moved the rest of the way to the northerly setback line, it would do much less intrusion for the neighbors. One way of doing this would be to locate the garage entrance on the front of the house, eliminating the side driveway. No doubt an architect as skilled as Mr. Easton will be able to think of better ways of accomplishing the objective. At the June 18th meeting, chairman noted that the perceived need to level the lot, drives, the positioning of the house increases excavation and blasting and intended noise dust truck traffic. While we realize that there's some amount of these activities may be necessary for the project, we think that it's, that a perfectly elegant house could be built with much less disturbance to the neighbors, short and long term, by conforming the design to the natural landscape and to the property. Thank you for the time spending on this matter and for allowing us to comment. Yours very truly, Lucy and Philip Saunders. And the other, the June 17th letter just kind of discusses changes in the revised plans concerned with the proposed location of house, height of house, screening, lighting. They would like an amber color, not a white color. Times of work, they'd like 7:30 to 5:00. Generator, they requested that their generator be moved from the south side to the north side. So both these sets of, both these letters will go into the public record with the minutes.
All right, so as I said, we've given this a half an hour. And if you could hold your comments, your presentation of 15 minutes, would that be possible? Okay, then that would give us 15 minutes for comments and questions from our consultants, ourselves, and anybody else who cares to make. Go ahead and start.
For the record, my name is Brian Nelson, I'm in here with industrial engineering. And we've got a board up here showing the revised site plan. This is the proposed board, going with Glen Road down at the bottom of the page, north going more or less straight up to the top of the page. And I just want to start out by showing kind of the progression of the movement of the house. We've got three footprints here. There is dark gray color, which is shown in this location here, which was the location of the house in the original submittal. The red footprint is the location of the revised submittal, which we presented a couple weeks ago when we were here. And what we've done since then is we've taken the house and basically slid it northeasterly direction about another 12 feet. And that's shown in the tan footprint right here. So again, you can see from the original to the first revision, and here we are at the second revision. The majority of the site features from the civil design end are pretty much the same. The driveway comes in on the southeastern corner, runs up, basically follows the existing driveway to about this point. The existing driveway to the existing house and barn presently heads up in this direction. The proposed driveway will kind of flare off a little bit in the northeasterly direction, wrap around to the garage over here and our entry court here. As we've repositioned the house, the average existing grade plane on the revised submittal was elevation 278.6. That elevation has decreased to 278.3, so there's a relatively minor change in the average existing grade plane. We've actually decreased the amount of impervious area by about 500 square feet, and that's really just the approach to the motor court has shortened up a little bit. Some of the driveway elements have shortened up, so there's a slight decrease in impervious area. There's a 6,350 square foot increase from the existing condition to the proposed condition. The hydrology and the drainage patterns from our original submittal in the first revision really have only changed in minor ways, so we still have a pretty significant reduction in runoff rates and volumes to Glen Road, and there are minor reductions to the abutters that would be on the southwest side of the property over here. The majority of the site runoff from the new impervious surfaces, including the area around the pool and Havana, the new house, the motor court in the upper city, you know, 30% or 40% of the driveway drains into a subsurface infiltration system located just east of the house. There is another set of catch basins about halfway down the driveway which drain into, this was formerly a rain garden with our original revised submittal. We've actually revised the grading and the vegetation that we're proposing in here. It's basically just a smaller stormwater depression. We had some comments from the conservation commission about the rain gardens, so we've changed that out. And the earthwork numbers have, with sliding the house to the northeast, have a slight reduction. There's about, the prior submittal, we had a net earthwork calculation of about 1,100 cubic yards of cut, and we've cut that down to about 845 cubic yards of cut. So there's a small reduction in the material level need to be hauled off site. And that's a very quick pass through the changes, relatively minor. We did actually get out, one of Dave's requests was, we did do another test bit right in the center of the infiltration system, and those soils were consistent with the four or five tests we had done around, so we've confirmed that we've got pretty good soils in the area of the infiltration system. And I will take this board down and turn it over to Eric.
For the record, Eric Swenson with the McDowell Company. So the changes, since last time here, the one thing that you guys commented on were the proximity of the spruce trees to the house on this side of the house, here. And what we've done is we've moved the house further from those spring trees, as well as changed them to green giant, everybody. And those are still the 10 and 12 foot height at that point. And other than that, there has been a change in the location of the pool. We've moved it to the right to facilitate us being able to move this further this way and get further from the property line here.
Move it to the right or to the left?
I'm sorry, to the left, so we can move the house to the right. And that, those are the only changes on the last given.
For the record, I'm Christopher Russ from Yon where you've seen architects. So the architecture of the house is unchanged from what you've seen from previous submission. Changes due to the natural grade height rising up a little bit. We were six inches below the ridge height, now we're two and a half inches below the maximum ridge height. And that essentially is the only adjustment made on these drawings.
You went up the hill? You didn't change the height of the building?
No, the building stayed the same height. The building from
Two and a half inches.
From the original submission, the very first submission we did, the building is one foot six shorter because of the grade plane and the shifts and things like that. So that was made in the second piece.
That's tight.
Tight. So nothing's changed other than that?
Nope.
Okay. Kim?
You know my thoughts on arborvit?
Yeah.
It's green giant. It's green giant. It's a better.
Yeah. But we still, it's still tight in here.
Not too tight for a arborvit.
Yeah, but it's
We've got about, all you can do is arborvit. We've got about 22 feet between the arborvit and
And the side of the house.
And the side of the house, yeah.
Yeah. And I assume the engineering is okay, so.
Yeah, last time we left it, it was really just some confirmatory testing and things like that. This is the same proposal, it was just, nothing really changed, except for my review.
Yeah. Betsy, do you have any observations?
My recollection from the last board meeting brought this up, my mentor, the developing team, was the board still had a lot of concern about the entry port in the front. And my understanding is that they're trying to gear toward a certain market, and that market wants arrival for it.
Even if they're vista, you'll, it'll be perfectly unusable.
Well, who would hold six cars in 60 feet wide?
Well, sort of. It's never gonna happen. You guys, the second letter expressed concern about lighting specifically. Just wondering first, where that property is in the relationship to the project?
The Saunders, if, the
We're going to go with letters.
Saunders property is down.
Right. So you're about 200 feet away. And the other letter?
They're both from the Saunders. One responded to the first round of plans or the second round of plans, and the most recent one, when I got the electronic version and I shipped it out to the Saunders. So the first letter was looking for a, instead of a white light, a more mellow. And they were also looking for a decrease in the height of the house during the winter months. They see the house, the existing house, which is the Memphis home, and they've requested more screening, improvement on lighting, work hours, and changing the generator location.
So the elevation that they're going to see on the house?
This one here is, this is the first elevation, which is, that panel or the living room is a step-down living room in order to bring that portion of the building, which is roughly 16 feet away from the main building.
So I have a section of that, if you want to take a look at what we have there. So this 5.2 you're looking at is a section from Saunders through this area. And if you take this second floor, I'll do the bottom of the scale, and go through the tree line, through the screening, the only portion of that that you're going to see is this area of the house. And that's, that's between, that's through this layer of screening, and then through another layer of screening, and then we're adding the green giant. And that's 250 feet from here to the side of our, the side of our house.
There's no entry point or lights on that side?
No, there's no entry or floor lights over there.
Lighting for the court, you have any running out for the parking court?
Yep, the parking court are low, I have those right here, are low path lights.
Right.
And they're dark sky light. So the locations of the four here, or, sorry, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then the style of light, and those are only three or four feet, they're not three or four feet from the ground, they're actually about a foot and a half to two feet off the ground, and the style of light is not great.
If I didn't know any better, I think that you hadn't made any changes since the last time. So personally, I'm very disappointed to see the small amount of changes you made, you didn't slide the house up the hill further, possibly consider relocating the entrance to the garage, either to the front of the house or some other place. The four courts still there. I just feel like you didn't really listen to us.
Can I mark out, I'm the only other person. I would respectfully like to point out that the big objection is from the Saunders and screening, and doing the screening, and moving the house 10 feet, it gives us the ability to put in those screening trees and have the room for them to grow, and that was, I think, the big issue. As far as the drive court is concerned, you know, again, for a house of this nature, I believe it is an important feature. No one sees that drive court, not the public, not any of the neighbors, nobody can possibly see it. It's, you know, we've done a lot of projects in the town, and the amount of developed area is no larger than what we did at 109 Chestnut, 115 Chestnut, 80 Highland, 24 Marybrook. And it is a large lot, whether it's considered five acres or two and a half, you know, I know there's a conservation and how we define what it is, but we are 450 feet from the street, we are 250 feet from any neighbor. We're very used, all these other projects I just mentioned, we're probably 80 feet from neighbors. There's so much room here, and we're so far from everybody. We've gone as far as we feel we can without taking away from the architecture, away from the project. We've moved drainage, we've reduced limited work areas, we've cut down the number of trees down to less, fewer, down to less than 100.
Yeah, less than 100.
And, you know, again, we're just so far away from everybody compared to the other projects that you've approved with this team, that I, you know, I would hope you consider approving this project.
Why does it matter that the garage doors are over on one side?
Well, again, it is, speaking as an architect, I could design a front entry garage that looked pretty good, but no one can see that architecture.
It's not a matter of whether you can see it, it's a matter of the fact that it gives you some flexibility where the house gets located.
If we rotate the garage, just say periodically 90 degrees, you go from a 26 foot wide gable letn that you're seeing to a 36'5" wide building with three doors on it, making the building that much longer at that point.
It makes it very long.
But you don't need the apron.
But I would also like to point out, we can fit in those, in those tree, what do you call them? The giant?
Arborvit. Which make us break out an orange.
So we're happy to substitute a different tree. If, remember, we have 22 feet, if, you know, there's a fair amount of room at this point that we can fit these screening trees. If you want a different tree, happy to do so.
I don't, I, you said, use the word respectfully. Mark, respectfully, I don't, I don't think that it's an absolute requirement that the garage doors be at the end of the building. I mean, I, you know, one of the things we ask for is a, is a design study of the garage, of the front, of a front entry garage. You're, look, you're asking us for a considerable change, and it doesn't matter about whether people can see it or not, we're actually, our site plan review, I don't know, the last time you read the site plan review by law standards, but we're held to assessing a proposal against those standards. And the standards include, one of the standards says, you minimize tree vegetation, soil removal, blasting and grade changes. And frankly, if you move the house, if you, if we could figure out a way to get the house further up that way, we'd have a lot less, I think we'd have less blasting and less soil movement and probably less disturbance of the site for things like the forecourt. And I'm just trying to think about how it might be possible to, not to have a rigid idea of what this house was to look like, but some sort of a give and take on how we can minimize things like blasting and recontouring and, and get a benefit out of doing that in terms of giving us a little bit more room for a buffering planning, it's not just a row of arborvities. So that, I think that that was what Steve was getting at, that we're, we're looking for some creativity. And we thought we would get the creativity because Jan is a, is a really good architect, and, and we thought, and he seemed to suggest that it might be possible to, to take a look at some of these things and give us some real changes opposed to an incremental change of 10 feet.
We actually, we actually did look at these things. We didn't do a formal study.
But you didn't feel that was necessary to present them to us?
We could if we need to, but it was, it just wasn't looking good. It wasn't, we've already reduced enough the amount of earth removal from 5,500 cubic yards to 800 and something cubic yards. I mean, that's real dramatic. We took, we briefly discussed, can we put the garage doors in the front, did a little bit of sketching, it just, it wasn't making a lot of sense. Yes, we could do a formal study and show it to you for your opinion, happy to do so.
I'll see it.
But, but by expert consultants and they
Well, you look at a two architects sitting here on the board, so we've had a little experience.
Yeah, we can do, I mean, we can do, present a formal study showing, you know, the alternative. But, you know, but again, if, putting the doors in the front just aren't what the western market is looking for. They like the doors on the side. It's, you know, every house we do, people, when we do custom houses, and mostly we're doing custom houses, people want the doors on the side. You know, it would, it's not desirable to have those.
I'm saying, it's, I feel terrible saying this, but it's not really the mission of the planning board to market a house.
No, I understand that, but we're all trying to build really nice houses.
I know, but you heard what Al read, that's what our mission is. Our mission is to make money, and our mission is to follow our zoning.
And the way to make money is to do a really good house?
I know, but I just find it hard to believe that there's just one and only way.
One and only to do a really good house.
Right, one and only way, the only way, just one. I just find, I know that there's infinite variations of the thing. And I'm an architect, I've been better homes than you.
You know, maybe it's pivoting the garage and not having it on the street line. I don't know what the answer is, but there surely is another way to look at it.
We think you've got more room. We think you've got more room.
A formal study that can show you
Yeah, we think you have.
Two options.
I mean, we're speaking as professionals, not as, not as ordinary citizens. So we think that you've
Present a formal study.
But not just present it in terms of, here's all the negatives, you can see there's absolutely nothing here that you can do wrong.
Give it a try.
Give it a fair try, please.
No, we, we, listen, the project, from our first site walk to now, the project has gotten better, from your perspective and my perspective, maybe.
Yes, it has. I agree.
And I don't know where we're at yet. I appreciate, I've always appreciated the process over the years. And to go from 500 to 100 yards to 800 yards, it saves a lot of money.
By the way, is there a trick, is there some sort of, I forget, on the earth removal bylaw? Are you guys okay on that? Does that need a special permit?
Yeah, we're still at a special permit.
So you've got to need a ZBA special permit.
Well, we need ZBA anyways because we don't, we don't have the frontage on the street.
Last time I did one, how the planning board issued a special permit.
That was, but that was because it wasn't residential. The, 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 the ZBA has the, has the special permit granting authority for that general bylaw earth removal thing. We're, our purview is non-residential.
Okay, well, we, as Mark said, they'll be applying to the zoning board anyway for a frontage issue.
Yeah, and I don't know where that stands.
There was a variance granted in 2001 to allow the former owners of this house to divide, and it was, I don't know if they brought a copy of it, but basically they had to rejigger their septic system, and then they also gave, or they sold a piece of land to the Saunders so that they could replace their septic system.
But there was a later, there was a later
The last one I've seen is 2000.
There's a later one. There's a later one that actually created this lot, subdivided the property and created a separate, a separate conservation lot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, that's right.
And, and, and so my question still stands.
Okay, because the 2000 decision created less frontage and lot width than what's allowed.
Right, and so now what we have is a non-conforming lot where we have total demolition and replacement construction. And that requires, is that the special permit you're talking about?
No, I think it was a variance, right?
No, it's, it's a special permit, it's a non-conforming lot.
It's a non-conforming lot, they don't have the frontage.
Right, so you need a special permit.
Where the lot width, I don't think you have the lot width either.
No, I think, no, you don't have, it's zone A, I think you're under a lot with, but
But the guidance we got from Noreen was we had to go through the planning board process before we get applied to the zoning board.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to know what the process is, because here's my question, the zoning, the zoning board appeals actually created a non-conforming lot that they then are saying that you could put, you could, so it's not grandfathered. They created it, and now they're saying you put replacement construction on it.
Well, they haven't said that yet.
Well, okay.
Because we have to apply for it.
But I mean, how could they do it? How could they create a non-conforming lot with a house on it and then, and then grant replacement construction on a lot they created?
Interesting frontage.
That's the question I had from last time, and that's the one I asked Betsy to research.
Could I respond to that out in some way? That is, the frontage did not change either when we bought the, excuse me, for the record, I'm Lucy Saunders of 445 Glen Road. When we bought that half an acre from the previous owners, that did not change the frontage. It may have changed the lot width at some, at one point on the lot, but there was no change to the frontage. And I don't believe it was the ZBA, I thought it was
But I think Elsa subsequently subdivided it. And so now there's a new lot
Oh, okay.
That has a house
But again, the frontage didn't change.
No, the frontage didn't change, but they set, the lot subdivision did. And so they created a new non-conforming lot. It's not the same configuration as the old non-conforming lot.
Okay.
With a house on it, that's now, that they're now saying, okay, you can replace the house, this existing house. And I just don't know And I just don't know, I've, this is a new one, this is, this is, at least in my experience. So I don't know what the answer is. I mean, it's, it's, what's the rationale is the question? So that was my homework assignment to Betsy at the last meeting. It's kind of a question for, for Joe Varn.
Well, so I'm going to have to go digging for the other decision.
Yeah, it's right there in the registry. That's where, that's where we found it.
We have a decision to make.
Do you have the decision too?
We have the ZBA decision.
Yeah.
I have one, I have one ZBA decision for variance, that's all I have.
No, there's another one in the registry. Well, you have only this one.
Yes, I think we have the one you talked about.
It's like a couple of years ago. Pardon?
It's in the notes on the ZBA website.
Yes, it is. It's true. It's, it's findable.
Okay.
So, looking for an answer to that. And, and we're looking to see if we can get some more room. I, I don't know if, if anybody else is concerned about the two inch height thing. That's, I mean, in the real world, two inches is nothing.
This is two inches from maximum ridge length.
This is next.
It could change if they move it again.
But we will be.
Maximum ridge length. We have dealt with that situation, as I tell you, as that before, Al. You know, we've been out there.
Just have them shooting before, after, during.
Shooting it as they frame.
Right, he'll certify, I mean, we, we will be careful, of course, we have to be careful.
Is there something magical about the roof pitch? I don't know.
We've taken, put in half out of the original.
Yeah. About six inches is the question, is it the end of the world?
Just take a look at that along with the shifts that you were discussing with the garage.
Comments from the audience? Yes?
I have two questions, man.
Your name, please.
Phil Saunders, four forty-five Glen Road. Have all the members of the planning board received letters of the book? Well, do you remember receiving?
I don't remember.
It was right into the record at the last meeting and then I just read it, read it, the next round of the record.
I think what you're asking is, you'd appreciate it if the members got the letter before the meeting.
Well, I'd appreciate it again, at this point, I'd appreciate it if they get it, period.
I think I sent electronic versions.
Well, I've, I've sent them to Betsy in the second seat, the chairman, but I don't have.
That's right, you sent it.
And I think I have Roy's email address, I didn't see him, but I don't have anybody else's. Well, could, could those letters be sent?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they can.
I'm Darcy Bartel from four fifty-five Glen Road. I had, I wrote a letter in June, I don't know, but I was unable to attend the last meeting. So I don't know if that was read or not.
I read that one in the, in the records.
And I think, so we're kind of on the, the backside, in the backyard. I, our, just, our big concerns were just the amount of trees taken down from the yard and how it just changes basically that whole area in the woods. And then the drainage, you know, you see days like today and I see the way the water pools. I just wonder with that type of structure, I'm not an engineer, you know, how that's going to affect things. By taking that volume of trees out, adjusting the grade of the land and that size of structure.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's an engineering solution to a.
So I think those, those are the highlights of the letter that I wrote in June and the, you know, the backyard and just kind of the clear cutting of that area remains a concern.
Yeah, it's, it, the planning board's been concerned about, we see a lot of lots now that require a lot of blasting, trees get cut down. And, and you can't get a handle on it, you know, because you, you think intuitively, you think this has got to make things worse. But the engineering calculations always say it's going to make things better. And, and it's counterintuitive, I mean, you know, but that's, we, we.
I think in answering the question, since this is the first time I have heard my neighbor wrote the letter. And that was his last meeting, certainly wasn't written on the record, so I would request her letter, certainly, followed by.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure anybody's. If I didn't read it, then I didn't have one.
And I know there's an earlier letter from, he didn't read the letters. Request the back piece of the letter.
It's a June ninth letter from Darcy Bartel.
Yes, that's.
Yeah. Dear planning board members, Chris and I are both out of town, unable to attend the upcoming planning board meeting on June nineteenth. We want our concerns in writing. We live at six, uh, four fifty-five Glen Road. Our physical address to four forty-one Glen Road. The lot is an attractive piece of wooded land with many large rock of crops. I attended the sidewalk on May thirteenth. I have two main concerns, the amount of trees that will be cut down and the potential increase of drainage. And we're not due to the proposed leveling of the land. Our hope is that the developer will do a better job in having the house fit the natural contours of the land and leave a large rock of trees to retain the wood and character of the property and the neighborhood. As we're not able to attend the meeting and raise the concerns in person, I want to put them in writing. And then there was another letter, um, the neighborhood for a number of people. Lucy and Phil Saunders, four forty-five Glen Road. Holly Ripley-Boyd and Daniel Boyd at four eighty-two Glen Road. Mary Marcy-Goldsmith at four twenty-five Glen Road. Rebecca and Dana Callow at four eighty-two Glen Road, four ninety-two Glen Road. Anne and Kirk Gore-Bosdogen at four forty-four Glen Road. Darcy and Christopher Bartel, four fifty-five Glen Road. Gretchen and Robert Barras at four thirty-eight Glen Road. Sana and Nasir Abduleet at four thirty-two Glen Road. And they all wrote, thank you for coming to the sidewalk at forty, four forty-one Glen Road on May thirteenth. We are neighbors and in some cases, physical address to the property, the property is attractive site. Many desirable natural features, unfortunately, the proposed development calls for clearing cutting of trees and vegetation, blasting and substantial removal of topsoil, subsoil ledge to create large level building lot on which there'll be a very large invisible structure. These activities will transform the site and adversely impact us to varying degrees, particularly with respect to visibility, lighting and drainage. We believe the developer could do a much better job in working with and clearing the natural features of the property and creating and siding a house that would be much less intrusive upon our neighbors. We will respectfully request that the planning board use its powers to produce this more natural and less intrusive result.
Here's the deal, Mark. You, you need at least a special permit for variance. And the zoning board appeals is going to be looking for the planning board for recommendations.
Yes.
So I'm just referring to what Susan said a few minutes ago. Our concern is not what the market will bear. Our concern is, is what the neighbors are concerned about and about our own standards that we have to live by in the zone, by law. The last thing you want is a negative recommendation from the planning board on this house. So my suggestion would be, with all respect to the architect and the designers and what you're, what the people who are buying expensive properties want to see, our, our request would be, please, listen to what the neighbors are saying, listen to what the planning board is saying, and try and, and be more creative and flexible in what you come up with.
Well, we'll do a study showing the garage doors.
I'm serious. I mean, we could make a negative recommendation on this house.
We understand, I fully understand, I understood it a year ago when I bought the property. If we're going to do a study, it, it will be a serious study. And as the house has, the project has gotten better, surprisingly so, but yes, it has. Maybe it will get better. But if we're going to do the study, we're going to, you know, we're, they're all professionals, we're going to do a good study.
You bought the property, you took the risk. But that's not our issue. Our issue is to try to get the most sympathetic, compatible result from whatever goes on that property. That's, that's our concern.
That's it.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sorry.
At Martha, Seventeen Warren Lane. I lived it for fifty-five Glen Road from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen seventy-five. Two points, and I don't know if they really count, they, but just historically. The Lombards, who originally owned the property, I think there's a reason that they put so much of that land in. It's not exactly conservation, it was a, like a restriction, you know.
Conservation restriction.
She was very woodsy and, and it was important to her to, to keep that property more in the woods. I guess that's it, except the ledge, I mean, we did the, our swimming pool in there. It needed a lot of blasting and water comes up, but it's not even raining to, in the basement at four fifty-five Glen Road. It just pours up. And it's not because of the hydrology, I don't believe. I think it's because of the, the way the ledge works. And I'm wondering, ultimately, we put a septic system and we couldn't put anyone anywhere near the house. We had to build an aqueduct all the way into the backwoods because of the ledge. And I'm wondering if they really studied the, the effects of, I, I know that the engineering with runoff and stuff is pretty accurate. But you don't know what goes on with the ledge underground and it does funny things. I'm not sure, and you don't know, I don't think there's any way of telling what happened. Anyway, I'm not sure if that counts or not, but.
I appreciate the historical perspective, actually.
Yeah. In the, in the past, it's been, probably want to say, the geo, like geotext has estimated or quantified what they would be seeing from it before. But then during construction, that gets verified, it's usually, you know, it's pretty accurate, you know, you get a pumping rate, you know, because they end up being backups. And then that gets checked against what their anticipation, anticipated rate was going to be to make sure it still holds or if something has to be enlarged to, to, to accommodate it. You know, so it's typically how we've dealt with, you know, these, these issues, you know, especially for the ones where you have people putting like full, you know, basketball courts under their garages and stuff like that, you know. It's how we've handled it in the past. And it seemed to, you know, worked out fairly well.
Not always.
Nature has a way.
Kind of does what it wants, but it can, it can be engineered.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, the, the duration of this, of these construction projects as such, I mean, if it was like a normal house and you could build it in one season and it was dry, you could have an unreasonable, an unreasonable expectation of what you'd be seeing for groundwater, right? But this is the size of my elementary school. So, and we're dealing with this, you know, there's another here and we have another one where, you know, the, this is the exact same thing's going on. Like, you know, they confirmed what the groundwater is, what their rates are. It's been opened up for now, like, you know, five months. And, and, you know, as they, during this construction, so now they're coming back and then asked to, like, you know, tweak their, their infiltration.
Is that what's going on? Okay. I was wondering what the changes were.
That's ours.
Okay. Yeah, that's one where there's a lot of ledge and I guess it needs to be tweaked.
Again, cram into what is approved.
What do we, we're continuing to what date?
September third.
What time?
Seven thirty, uh, seven forty-five.
Yeah. You, are you going to build a pool or not?
If I were to build it without a client, without a customer, I would not put in the pool. If there's a customer, it's probably fifty-fifty whether they would want a pool. That seems to be what we're doing.
I mean, the pool is, that's driving a lot of what's going on. I mean, that's, and it's something you might not even build. In fact, it's settling there with two out of three chances you weren't. That would be one area that I, I might look at as possibly giving you some flexibility. Just a thought.
I guess we'll look at everything.
Okay. So September third, what time?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
You kicked on a lot more than I did. That experience, dude. Great, thanks.
I hope that wasn't inappropriate, what I said.
What's that?
I hope that wasn't inappropriate.
Very interesting.
No, but that's, like, it's all, that's how we kind of learn to help it. It's full of options, like, I mean, like, would you, like, there's estimated stuff, but.
You don't know where the rock is, right?
I still have trust, though.
Oh. I mean, how, how, and, and the funny part was, at Glen Road, that's on top of the hill. That, that, you know, that's the highest point. And, and you see water pouring up when there's, there's no, there's no ground, it's not groundwater. You know, it's not water table. It's.
You know, like.
I wonder if it's coming from the reservoir or something, that, that, I have no idea.
It would be like a precursor, I feel like, there is a way.
Well, there may be some faults in the rock, just, you know, there's a certain, she said when it happened really badly for her, for the new owner now, in April is when it got, but, and so you generally would think that's snow melt, ground saturation, you know.
Alan, what did you do when it started gushing up?